Good evening, I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and a pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
Mr. Warner, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure, right hand over your heart, repeat after me. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votek.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Creason?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Ms. Dyson?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Thank you, Ms. Votek. Before we go to our first item on the agenda, sadly enough, we've lost many employees and relatives of our employees who have been close to our school system. We just found out that Ms. Bev Lozis, who's been in this office for many, many years, she was a valuable employee and a good friend to all of us. And so, we want to wish the Lozis family a deepest heartfelt sympathy. Also, Mavis Torterich, who was a longtime elementary school principal with us, has also passed, and we're very sorry to the Torterich family. I know that she had children who came to our school system also, so she'll be sadly missed. And Ms. Lori McGinnis, who's our supervisor of nurses, her mother passed. Ms. Maltebana and all of her children came to our school system and, you know, to the Maltebana-Mginnis family, our deepest condolences go out also. And Janice Anderson, who is in this office, her brother passed away, so our condolences to Janice. Ronald Richards is her brother, and he passed away, and our deepest condolences go out to the Richards family and to Janice. Okay, so let's take a moment of silence for all these individuals who we will sadly miss.
Thank you. And again, our deepest condolences to all of these families. I know we hate to start the meeting off like that, but going on, we go to the first item on the agenda. It's an education item. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mrs. Dyson. Item 2.1, 2025-2026 School Calendar. Hello, Ms. Lametta, how are you?
Hi, good evening. I have some information for you this evening regarding the employee calendar voting for the 25-26 school year. And I would first like to start by commending Ms. Andy Robinson and the committee that she put together and their work to develop some calendar options for the employees. And in your handouts, I have for you, on the first, your agenda first page for item, agenda item 2.1, I have the results for each location and the voting totals on the bottom. And the employees voted from October 4th through October 15th. And you'll see that calendar option 1 received the most votes with 263 votes. And the other two options, option 2 and option 3, had nearly the same number of votes, with option 2 receiving 202 votes and option 3 receiving 207 votes. So I would like to now review the three options with you, but I would also like to say that it really starts to get difficult to create variety in the options because what we do every year is try not to start school in July because the summers are getting shorter and shorter. So each calendar option begins the end of August with Teacher Professional Development Day. And then we try now to end the school year before Memorial Day. So students are off and everybody's off Monday Memorial Day. So with those two start and end points, and then with the typical holidays that everyone has come to enjoy, meaning a week for Thanksgiving, two weeks for Christmas, a week for Mardi Gras, with those constraints, it really doesn't provide for a lot of variety. So what I'll do is I'll go over, and of course, just to remind you, we have to come up with a calendar that has a 178 instructional days. That's our requirement. So we have to start the end of August and by Memorial Day, squeeze in 178 instructional days amidst the holidays that people have come to, you know, to expect. So, having said that, I'll walk you through option 1, and then, which is the one that won, and then I'll show you the difference in option 2 and 3. And I've been making these calendars for you for a while now, and I'm to the point I need glasses to see them. So I will start with option 1, and I'll just walk you through the colored calendar. And you'll see in July, we start with 4th of July, holiday for 12-month employees. All three options start with Teacher Professional Development Days beginning August 4th and going through August 7th, with the parent educators, bus drivers, and capture technicians beginning their PD on August 6th, with students then reporting to school August 8th. So we really try not to start in July. Then September, all employees and students would have Labor Day holiday. We're going to skip October for a minute because that's going to be the variety in all three, so I'll come back to October in the end. In November, all three options, we have the week off for the students, November 24th through the 28th, and all the non- and 10-month employees, with the 12-month employees being off on the 27th and the 28th. Christmas holidays, all options begin on the 22nd and go through January 2nd with the Teacher Professional Development Day, January 5th. And the bus operators also have training on that day. And then the classes will resume for students on January 6th. We will have Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s observance holiday on October 19th. Then in February, the week of February 16th, Mardi Gras holiday, with the entire week for the non- to 10-month employees and students, as well as the 16th through 18th being holiday for 12-month employees. No holidays in March. In April, because of that 178-day limit and the start and end times I mentioned, we don't have time for a week off for Easter. Many people have asked in the past, I think Ms. Robinson said a question people had, is why can't we do what we did in 2016? And I said, what did we do in 2016? They said, well, we had a whole week off for Easter. Well, if y'all remember, we used to come to school all the way till the end of May. We'd be here till the last day in May. So because we're not doing that, because we're ending by Memorial Day, that week that we're not coming to school and not delaying the start of summer for a week, we can only afford two days off for Easter. And being that close to the end of the year, it doesn't make sense to take a week off that close to the end and then push the summer off for a week because we also have requirements for summer school, high school leave remediation and things. We have to get so many hours in for summer school. So that's been our trade-off there with ending school by Memorial Day. And all the options have for Easter for the students, April 3rd through the 6th, with the 12-month employees getting off on the 3rd. So we are limited to those two days for Easter because we've had the week for, you know, Mardi Gras, a week for Thanksgiving, and then two, four weeks for Christmas. So all the options have those dates. In addition, in May, like I said, Memorial Day, the 25th, the students and teachers are finished by then. Last day of school for students would be May 21st. Records Day for teachers, handicapped technicians, and bus operators would be May 22nd. And then Memorial Day, the 25th of May, will be a holiday for the 12-month employees, as well as in June, June 19th, 12-month employees will have Juneteenth as a holiday. So that was built into all three options. So if you take the options and just line them up next to each other, where you have October sitting next to each other, I can show you the only variety we were able to put in. Because these three options have the 178 instructional days, so the variety we were able to put in, and it was just preference of, you know, what people thought, you know, would be helpful in October, is for option 1, you'll see the nine weeks ends, and all three options, the nine weeks ends on October 10th. So what option 1 does is give a one-day fall break on October 13th, which gives a three-day weekend there, right at the end of the nine weeks, which gives teachers time to get their grading done, exams grading, get their grades ready. Because all three options have Report Card Conference nights, October 21st to 23rd. With option 1, October 14th would be Teacher Professional Development Day, Capture-a-Technician PD Day as well, and the students would be off on the 14th. So that would be the fall break there and the PD Day right behind it, right at the end of the nine weeks. That's option 1. The difference in option 2 is, you'll see nine weeks still ends October 10th, but in this option, the PD Day would be the 20th, which would be the Monday of the Report Card Conference Week. So the teachers would have the PD Day on Monday and then three days for Report Card Conference. And what this option did, which we've never done before, is put the fall break on Halloween because some people felt like having the kids off on Halloween to get ready for their parties and do everything they need to do for Halloween. So that was Ms. Colburn, Kara Colburn's idea to actually try fall break on Halloween. That option didn't win, but I thought it was a good idea, you know? Okay, and option 3, the only difference there, same thing, we end the nine weeks on October 10th. This one has the PD Day on the 13th to help teachers with the grading because they finish PD Day at 3 o'clock on a PD Day, right? As opposed to a day where you have bus duty and the days longer. So they felt like they gave them more time there. And option 3 did also have fall break on Halloween. So honestly, that was the only variety we could try to mix in was October because of the start and end dates and putting the usual holidays that everyone, you know, likes to have. So, and as you see the results, the employees voted for option 1, with option 2 being very close as well, so two and three to each other, so.
All right, any questions from the board? Mr. Long?
I'll make a motion to accept option 1 for the school calendar for the 2025-26 school year.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Mrs. Lemoine. Any other questions? I have a question. It's interesting that the Transportation Department had any, anyone vote for option 1. Any insight on that? No?
I do not have any insight on that, no sir.
I was just wondering. All right, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor? Vote.
Motion passes, 11-0.
All right, item 2.2, Numeracy Professional Learning. Tell us about that, Ms. Lametta.
Yes, sir, and I don't need my glasses for this one. So, okay, so what I have for you tonight is some information on Act 260. And Act 260 requires all teachers who teach math in grades 4 through 8 to take and complete some professional learning courses that focus on numeracy skills instruction, similar to the Science of Reading requirement that was in the past, right? So in response to Act 260, what the Department of Education did, they developed and released a suite of numeracy professional learning courses. But they released this suite not only for the required grade bands of 4 through 8, but they also released some courses for K through 3 teachers and 9 through 12th grade teachers that's not required, but that the 4th through 8th grade training that they did release meets the requirements per Act 260. But they did also release some training for K to 3 and 9 through 12. So as far as the course design and the course content, all the required and the optional courses will follow a similar design. Each course will have 25 modules, and the modules will include the learning experiences and application tasks to support the teachers in help to build the breadth of understanding of the math and experience that the students will have across the grade levels. So these modules will include strategies and models that the students will engage in at each level, and they intentionally overlapped the K through 3, the 4 through 8, and the 9 through 12 coursework so that teachers can have training in what they're currently teaching. And then if they switch grade bands, they'll have some of the coursework already under their belt. So there is some intentional overlap in the K to 3, 4 to 8, and 9 through 12. And the 9 through 12 coursework includes Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II, coursework about those subjects. And the state provided a professional learning platform called Canopy, which is similar to the Canvas that we use to deliver our curriculum instruction to the teachers and to the students that the teachers can use to access this coursework, complete the coursework. We can monitor their progress and who completes it, and they're providing this at no cost to the school system. So the state developed this and they provided it for us at no cost for the teachers to participate in this. I will say some really good things about the training is it helps the teachers understand the level of skill required to meet the standards, and they also have opportunities for the teachers to review samples of student work. The teachers have constructive response answers that they answer, and they can get feedback from the state and from each other on their answers. So it really has been a collaborative effort, and I think it's going to go a long way to help the students push, the teachers push the students to the level of learning required to master the state's standards. So it's looking to be a good thing for us. So as a recap, for who has to participate, Act 360 requires the math teachers in grades 4 to 8 to complete the numeracy course, and those teachers will receive $1,000 stipend from the district once they complete the course. Now, the teachers in K to 3 and 9 through 12 are not required by the state to do it. It's optional, but if they opt to do it and complete the training, the district will also pay them $1,000 stipend for taking on that professional learning on their own.
All right, Andy?
Yes, ma'am.
Where are the funds coming from for the stipends?
Title II.
Title II? All right, thank you.
Mrs. Dyson?
And will those funds be awash, like we'll get them from the state and then they're paid out? How does that work?
Title II is a federal funding grant that has to do primarily with professional development so that you can either provide your own or bring in people to do it for you and such. And when we looked at this, this is a tremendous time commitment of our teachers. And it is, it's a really good, it's a good program. It's a long program, but it's a good program. So we felt that we needed to compensate our teachers for doing this, and a lot of, a lot of it will be done outside of school time. So we're going to put that $1,000 toward their completion of the course. They have to complete these modules, 4 through 8th grade math teachers, by August 1st of 2025. Now, we have, we're trying to encourage them to complete it by the end of the school year because we, you know, they work in collaborative groups and those kinds of things, but by state mandate and legislation, because it's actually in the state statutes now. This is a law passed by the legislature that they must do this. Then we will provide that $1,000. So it is Title II funds. It is not awash. We are using that for professional development of our staff in lieu of doing maybe something else.
And are these, excuse me, is this going to be done through the web or through in-person?
Virtually. Virtually. But there's collaboration, so there are many, many teachers throughout the state, obviously, that are doing this. So as different teachers are working through those modules, they will then collaborate with each other, look at each other's responses to it, and be able to have that interchange back and forth on this site.
So it's real-time?
Yes.
They're doing it on?
Well, they, yeah. I mean, yes, to an extent. It's virtually done, but they will have some real-time collaboration with some other teachers if they so choose.
Okay.
And they're required to comment on other people's work and other people's answers. That's the requirement. If you have basically an online course, like in Blackboard, you're required to give an answer and then respond on someone else's answer. They are required to respond, and the state is monitoring it. And if your response doesn't seem like you really put in thought or any sort of improvement behind it, the state will put you back to a prior module and say you have to go back and redo it. So they are monitoring the responses to make sure, you know, it's being done with fidelity.
Okay, good. Well, I'm glad it's, I'm glad it's also being offered to our kindergarten through 3rd grade also. It's wonderful. A great option for our teachers. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Lemoine, seconded by Mrs. Dyson. Please vote.
Motion passes, 11-0.
All right, back to you, Mrs. Dyson.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Okay, next item on the agenda, personnel items. And before you, you have the personnel changes. Oh, okay.
You know the retirements.
Yes. Denise Pritchard, who is our supervisor of personnel, and before that, she was a principal and a teacher.
Principal at Trist. Prior to that, she was a principal at Davies for a while, then prior to that, she was a language, English Language Arts teacher at the middle school and elementary level. A wealth of experience and, I mean, just a tremendous asset to our school system. Hate to see her retire, but this is her time to do so.
Well, we sure will miss Ms. Pritchard. She's been a wonderful supervisor of personnel, but also, as you mentioned, a principal. And one of my daughters had the opportunity to have her as a teacher in middle school, and she was, she was great. She was a wonderful teacher. So we want to wish you, Denise, a very happy retirement, and you will be missed, definitely. Those will be big shoes to fill. So happy retirement to Denise Pritchard. And then Michelle Smith is a kindergarten teacher at Davies, and I know she will be sorely missed also. And I'm sure she missed.
Long, long time employee, wonderful employee. We get every day, every year, parents asking for their children to be placed in her class at the kindergarten level. She's taught kindergarten for a long time. Prior to that, she was a teacher in our preschool, four-year-old program. Just tremendous. Her husband is still with us, though. He's a teacher with us also at the high school, so he's not going anywhere. At least I hope he's not going anywhere. He's doing a wonderful job, and we're sorry to see Michelle retire, but hopefully she will be around to continue to offer her support to our students.
Yes, Michelle, happy retirement on behalf of the entire board. You will be missed also, and I know you're a wonderful kindergarten teacher who, who never stopped, I'm sure, in the classroom. And your students will, future students will not have that opportunity, but thank you for being, you're many years of service to us. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah. And Michelle, that was Henry Smith's daughter-in-law.
Yes.
And I agree, she was a wonderful teacher. The kids loved her. And Denise Pritchard, I can remember when we appointed her as Assistant Principal at Gojek.
That's true. I forgot that little step. And then after this term, I asked her to go to Davies as the principal and then over to Trist when we opened, when we were making a move there. So she's been wonderful.
She must have about 40 years, huh?
Well, not quite, but she's close to it.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Anyone else? Okay, well, again, happy retirement to Michelle Smith and Denise Pritchard. And thank you again for both of your services to the students of St. Bernard Parish. We appreciate it greatly. Okay, next item on the agenda is the annual financial and compliance audit, and this is a finance item. Ms. Creason?
All right, as Ms. Dyson said, we have the 2023-2024 Annual Financial and Compliance Audit, and we have Mr. Fernandez here with us this evening.
Okay. In your package, you have our 2020 through 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And also with us today, we have Mr. Jeremy Thibodeau and Ms. Alexandric Flohr. Yes, I'm going to say your name. From Ericsson Crentel, which is the firm that performed our annual audits. So they're here to give you the results, so I'll just turn it over to Mr. Thibodeau.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
There you go. All right. So as David said, my name is Jeremy Thibodeau. I am the engagement partner over the various engagements that we conducted this year with Ms. Ali. She was one of our senior auditors on the engagement. Mike Caparado was the senior manager over the engagement, really responsible for the day-to-day and the fieldwork. Unfortunately, he couldn't come tonight. He had a family emergency with one of his kids today, was sick, so he left me to do this. So start off with a little disclaimer. You know, this presentation is a supplement to the Act 4, so please do not take this as a standalone document. This is not meant to serve in place of the actual audit report. We're going to go through everything at a fairly high level, mainly go through all of our various reporting that we are required to do. So this, as David said, is on the June 30th, 2024 financial statements we will be issuing, or have issued, unmodified opinions dated November 5th. So basically, that means that the financials are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with the U.S. Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. We also conducted the audits in accordance with Generally Accepted Auditing Standards, Government Auditing Standards, and the Uniform Guidance, which is the compliance audit over all your federal awards. And then you are required to get two additional engagements done. They're called Agreed Upon Procedures engagements, one in accordance with the Legislative Auditor, they're statewide agreed upon procedures, and the other in accordance with Bessie on performance and statistical data. And so we'll go over all those reports over the next several slides. Just a quick overview of the numbers. So as of '24, you're going to end the year at just over, or just under, 126 million in total fund assets, just under 25 million in total liabilities, and a total fund balance of almost $101 million. Major changes there from the assets and liabilities, you can see that those are pretty big swings, almost $8 million apiece. Really, that's just, the assets really decreased because you collected on your receivables that were outstanding on the prior year, which then allowed you to pretty much settle up some inter-fund payables. So basically, a wash there. From revenue and expense standpoint, the end of the year at about $128.3 million in revenue and $128.4 million in expenses. So that's slightly up from the prior year, as you can see. On the revenue side, mainly due to investment earnings, obviously, the market's been performing well over the past year or so. You did have an increase in your ad valorem taxes, but that was mostly offset by a decrease in your sales taxes, so that was kind of a wash. The other big change was the additional funding that y'all got for the certified and support salary supplements from the state that was passed in the legislature. So that's a big swing in your expenses as well, and also you just had a general increase in general instructional expenses throughout the school year. So overall, you ended the year with a fund balance of, or a change in fund balance of about $140,000, so relatively stable there. From a fund balance standpoint, you ended the year at, like I said, about $101 million. And so you can see the allocation of that across non-spendable, restricted, assigned, and unassigned is relatively stable year over year, and that's what we want to see. We don't want to see wild fluctuations in that without a true purpose. But you can see the majority of it, the overwhelming majority of it, is assigned, and it's assigned for all your capital improvements that y'all have for future use. The unassigned portion holds in steady at about 12%, but overall, from a number standpoint, another well, another good year for the district. All right, so from a reporting standpoint, so these are some of the other reports that we have on these next couple of slides. So we consider the board's internal control over financial reporting and compliance with certain laws, regulations, and grant agreements in accordance with the government auditing standards. Happy to report that the results of our test did not identify any deficiencies or findings in internal control or any instances of non-compliance. With the Uniform Guidance, this is our audit over your federal programs. So we look at your compliance and controls over the direct and material compliance requirements for your major federal programs. The results of our test did not identify any deficiencies. or any non-compliance in accordance with those direct and material compliance requirements. So just like the audit report, two clean opinions for those. The BESI agreed upon procedures report is required by the Department of Ed over some performance and statistical data. We performed four different procedures. The results of our, the results of our testing did not identify any exceptions in those procedures. And then the Legislative Auditor statewide AUP report has been mandated by the Legislative Auditor for going on six or seven years now. We took a little bit of a break during COVID. Been re-instituted. This is the second year that they were re-instituted. So it's over fourteen different compliance and control areas that we test. We did identify one exception when it came to sexual harassment training. One of the employees that we pulled did not have the training done. For us, it's, it's not a big deal from a reporting standpoint. Obviously, y'all want to be in compliance with it. But it did not rise to the level of us needing to report it in the actual audit report as a finding. So it just, it basically dies at the AUP level. So we have a corrective action plan for that, which will be addressed and reported to the Legislative Auditor. But that is the only exception that we've had in our, our two years of auditing for y'all. Some other required communications, just about the audit in general. You know, we're providing reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. We can't provide absolute assurance because we cannot look at every single transaction. We're exercising professional judgment, professional skepticism. We identify the risk of material misstatement during our planning, and we respond to that through the use of our audit procedures. We're obtaining an understanding of your internal control, but we're not issuing an opinion on its effectiveness. That would be a completely separate engagement. We look at the appropriateness of the accounting policies and estimates made by management. And we conclude whether we have any going issue concern. So basically, do we think the district is going to go out of business in the next 12 months? Which the numbers dictate that's nowhere close to happening. This next slide, I'm not going to read it, other than there's a bunch of no's on it, which is what you want. No illegal acts, no major transactions that we had an issue with, no findings. And then there are some estimates that are built into your financial statements that you need to be aware of. The collectability of accounts receivable, depreciation expense in your pension and OPEV liabilities. We found that those methodologies were sound and those estimates were fine. The disclosures are consistent and clear. All the supplemental information, all the extra information, the statistical section, the introductory section, all of that is complete and appropriate. And we've asked management for various representations across all of our engagements, and they have provided those to us, which is what's allowing us to actually release the reports to you tonight. And with that, certainly thank you to David and his team and the superintendent for, again, being so welcoming to us and making this process go very smooth as far as we're concerned and being a joy to work with. Certainly is much more enjoyable on our, on our side of things when we have good people to work with on the client side of things that make it much easier for us to do our job and kind of work through it as quick as we can and be as efficient as we can. With that, certainly happy to answer any, any questions anybody has.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Dysart?
Another question. Just, I'd like to make a, a motion that we accept the audit report conclusions at this time.
A motion on the floor from Ms. Dysart. Do we have a second? We have a second from Ms. White. Any further discussion or questions? There being none, please cast your vote.
This motion passes, eleven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And just maybe David can explain a little bit. We also provided you with the complete Annual Comprehensive Financial Report to read at your leisure. It's over 200 pages that Mr. Fernandez and staff has compiled. If you wish to have it. Our auditors have just provided you with a very, like he said, high-level overview in the report that he just gave you. But all of the detail is within this document if anyone wishes to read it and ask anything about it for the future. Okay?
All right, next up, we have.
Wait, Ms. Creason, if I could. Who helped you put this together this year, Mr. Fernandez?
Well, it was.
I know it doesn't just happen.
The entire group, the entire business department staff. The covers and divided pages were courtesy of Sarah Felton to make it look good. But it was a great, a group effort between the entire team and the business operations department, so.
Well, I just want to thank you, Mr. Fernandez, and your staff in finance and Ms. Sarah Felton for putting this together and always making it look so nice and for doing an excellent job. I know you've been working with the auditors and your staff has also. So thank you for your cooperation, Mr. Fernandez, Ms. Voeche, and, and your staff with our auditors. And we appreciate all that y'all do every day. Thank you very much.
And I just want to recognize that Ericsson Crentel, they're a pleasure to work with as well. We're very pleased with the last two years' audits, and we look forward to continuing our relationship with them.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner, do you have something to add?
I just want to follow up with Mrs. Dysart said. Thank you guys so much, your staff, all your group, everybody that you touch out there to make sure that they put this together. And it's as strong as it is every year, 31 years running. You know, and we look at some of our neighboring districts and some of the issues that they, they're having. And yet, we can sleep at night knowing that our finances, not a penny's not spent correctly. And just thank you for that. We appreciate you.
We try. Thank you.
When they're finished.
I'm done. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on. Next up.
Wait, wait. Before you.
No, I also wanted, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, Mr. Fernandez does an incredible job with a very limited number of people that we have. And to produce this document of over 200 pages, you know, it's all in-house. We do it ourselves with his lead. It's been, you know, unquestioned, unqualified opinions, running over 30 years. And I think the community, hopefully, then, has a comfort level that the money that comes through here, which is significant each and every year, is accounted for correctly, spent according to the laws and the regulations, not only the state of Louisiana, but the federal government, and that we have no question costs and no findings whatsoever, which is unbelievable. But the entire staff and community, you know, this, this outreach, it goes to our schools, all of our schools, our administrators, our teachers. Sometimes people get, oh, you mean, I have to fill out this form? Or I have to comply with this? Or what do you mean? I just can't go out and buy this if I feel like doing it. And these are the kinds of things that, when we get a report like this, that we can say to people, this is why we do it. Because we can then say to our community, they can have full faith in everything that we're doing, that the money is handled properly, and that it has been audited and monitored over and over again by not only the CPA firm that we've hired, but it goes through to the Legislative Auditor. We have federal monitoring and compliance visits continually. So there's tremendous oversight of these funds. And I want to thank, you know, all of our school people, our teachers, our principals, our administrators out there, our department heads in following the procedures that we have set up. And this would not work if we didn't all work together in this process. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, and thank you to everyone within our organization.
Anybody else? No? All right, moving on. Item 4.2, 2024-2025 Revised General Fund and Special Revenue Funds Budget.
Mr. Fernandez?
Okay. In your packets is the revised General Fund and Special Revenue Funds Budget. There's several exhibits in there, and this is mostly a technical revision. What we've done is we have gone in and re-appropriated encumbrances at year-end and fund balances, and we made a few adjustments to the revenues and expenditures as well. The special revenue funds reflects the actual final, or current allocations for the federal and state grants. The first exhibit is a summary of the general fund budget with revenues and total revenues, expenditures, other financing sources and uses, and ending, projected ending fund balance. Two and three is a detail of revenues and expenditures in the general fund. And four is the special revenue funds budgets. So if you notice the major things that are addressed, as I said, we went in and we re-appropriated the year-ending encumbrances. We carried those forward into the current year. We also added fund balances, different fun, different amounts that were included in the fund balance at year-end that would be re-appropriated for certain purposes in the year. And we made a few other changes as well. We reflected a slight incre, we reflected a slight increase in ad valorem collections based on the current ad valorem assessments that were released by the assessor's office. So we are going to have a slight increase in those taxes this year. There are a few other things. E-rate reimbursements increased because we were approved for a project by the federal government to provide some, that were requiring in our schools. And we're going to get the funding for that as well. So you'll see an increase in revenues and expenditures for that. You'll also see that we've included the certified and support supplements from the state as well as the differentiated pay supplements. So those are in revenues and expenditures as well. Other than that, there are just some slight increases, or slight changes based on staffing, hiring of people. We adjusted that slightly. Some people that we budgeted in the spring had retired and were replaced with other people who were on the staff. So we just kind of tightened up on those and adjusted those salary numbers as well and the benefits. And as I stated, in the special revenue funds, in the ad valorem maintenance fund, we adjusted the ad valorem revenues as well based on the current assessment values. And the remainder is just adjusted based on the current actual grant amounts in our federal and state grants. So be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Aaron?
What's the additional $120,000 of rental revenue?
That is for some rental of some property that we had discussed previously with the board. The Sebastian Roy property, they're doing some work down the road in building some pipeline, doing some pipeline work. And they requested that where they would use that Sebastian Roy property as a drive-through for a good part of this year to help them out with that works. And that's, reflects the money that we negotiated to allow them to use that property.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, Mr. Fernandez, with the, going back to the audit report, with the money that was invested that did real well because the stock market is up, how much money roughly do we, like, we had invested this year? For the total amount we invested?
In actual investments?
I could, roughly?
Investments, we had a total of $23 million invested.
And do you?
At the end of the year.
At the end of the year. Do you, do you yourself, or is it a team of y'all, pick how y'all going to invest the money?
We're limited by the state and the types of investments we can invest. And we have our fiscal agents that, our banks that help us out with those. And it's mostly in federal government securities, treasury bills, treasury notes, things of.
Yeah, I figured it would be real conservative, of course. So it's not, any of the money's not like in the index fund, like asset.
No, the state doesn't allow you to.
Mandates what you can, you can pick what they mandate?
Correct. It's very limited what the state allows you to invest public monies in. You can't play the stock market and you can't.
No, no.
Invest in things like that.
Yeah, well, I was curious because it did a lot better.
It's mostly in, in, in government securities, which are, you know.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Ms. Dysart, you have a question?
A question on the rentals. Does that also include the movie-making that is taking place at Cheltenham?
Yeah.
That addition, that additional amount? Does it reflect it? No?
No, 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 it does. Well, those monies, we usually just pass through to, to the benefit of the schools. But those, those are included.
Oh, those go directly to the school?
Yeah, we allow if they, if they rent any of the particular schools, the parking lots or whatever, we allow that school to have those revenues in their school activity funds. So it'll come through in the school activity funds, not in the general fund.
All right, thanks for that clarification.
Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mrs. Creason. I'd like to make a motion that we send to the full board with a recommendation revised General Fund and Special Revenue Funds Budget.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Warner. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Lomond. Any further questions or discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to get on to the fun stuff, the policy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Fernandez and Ms. Voeche. Next up, we have Ms. Lomond, Executive Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Dysart. Agenda item number 5.1 is a consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy, BCBJ. And we have Mr. Morales with us this evening.
Mr. Warner, it was good to hear that you have such enthusiasm, enthusiasm for policy as I do. So it's good to hear. The first policy is an updated policy. It's BCBJ, the notification of school board meetings. Remember, all of these are based on an act that has already been passed. This was passed at our last legislative meeting back in the summer of this year. And these are just kind of trickle-down effects. So everyone that we've talked about in August, in September, and now in November have been based on that legislative session. So Act 539 actually deals with 5.1 and 5.2, but I read them both separately. Act 539 requires significant, excuse me, sufficient information to enable the public to locate the broadcast for viewing be included in notification of the meetings. So now, we just have to include how to find this on cable television or via another outlet on our policy, excuse me, on our agendas.
Absolutely. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Voe, by Ms. Dysart?
I'll second it. Just want to make a statement. I think that's petty.
Sure.
It's pretty petty. But the legislature to take up the time to put, to force us to make sure that the, anyway.
So what we've done, if you notice on this agenda, at the top of the agenda, we've put on their live stream broadcast channel, Cox Communications Channel 8, that this is being live broadcast over. And you can also find it on the YouTube video, and it gives the link for that. So that'll, that'll be on our website, but it will also now be at the top of all of our agendas.
And on the website, is it live where they can just hit it and go directly to it? Or do they have to click on it and press it and go?
The, the link will be on, on the. You know, if they're doing it live, they'll be there here.
The link that we hit, it brings you directly to it, right?
Right.
Okay.
I think. If not, we'll try to get it to.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Dysart, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Okay, agenda item number 5.2 is the consideration of adopting school board policy, BCBJ.
So BCBJ is broadcasting and taping of school board meetings. This is actually a new policy based on the same act, which is Act 539. Act 539 requires each school board in a parish with a population of 25,000 or more to broadcast live all its proceedings in public meetings, including school boards' committee meetings. Now, again, there's some we've done for a substantial amount of time now, but it is actually going to be added to our policy. It's the only chance for us here.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. I'll make a motion that we adopt. I'm sorry, did you have a question?
No, no, I was just going to make the motion and, well, I'll second it with my same comment, petty.
Okay, we, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Creason, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes, ten zero. Ms. Bowman is not here at the moment. That's fine.
Okay, agenda item number 5.3 is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy, CBD.
CBD is the employment.
CBD is the employment of the superintendent. It is an updated policy based on Act 193. Act 193 requires that a superintendent's contract include that the superintendent be subject to a performance evaluation by the school board. So that is just something that was added to the policy. And I just want to remind all of you, the policies are in your packet, the, the way we set it up is the new policy additions are in blue, the, the strikes are in red, you know, just so you can keep track of what actually is being added to the policy, if it is not a new policy.
I also move that we accept CBD employment of superintendent.
Wonderful. We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Saisart.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Warner.
And I just want to say, we have been doing this for years and years. We've evaluated a superintendent and met with her, and she receives a performance evaluation by the school board every year, and we send it to the State Department and so that they have it also. So, and as you said, Mr. Warner, we've been doing, you know, these things, and it's kind of petty. But anyway, it's a.
Yeah, they write, they write a lot of these policies based on other district, definitely not St. Pardon.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number five point four is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy GAK.
GAK is dealing with personnel records. Again, it is an updated policy based on Act 495. Act 495 changes some limitations on confidential records. The statute now includes that home and personal wireless numbers, home addresses and personal email addresses of employees are now confidential.
Okay, so like you said, this is a revision of an existing policy. Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt policy GAK and send it to the full board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Creason, seconded by Mr. Long. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number five point five is a consideration of adopting school board policy GAMK.
GAMK is going over the use of pronouns and given names. Now, this is a new policy based on Act 680. Act 680 created a new statute. The new statute forbids school boards from adopting a policy that provides for an inquiry of an employee's pronoun that is inconsistent with the employee's sex or provides for an inquiry of an employee's name other than the employee's legal name. It also forbids school boards from adopting a policy that provides for an inquiry of the student's pronouns that is inconstudent, inconsistent with the student's sex. And then lastly, it includes that employees shall not be required to address a student by a name other than the student's legal name or require the use of a pronoun that is inconsistent with the student's sex. Other language in the statute includes definitions and disciplinary actions, which may not be taken against employees and students in regard to this new language. So again, this is a new policy. You may want to look over it just to see exactly what it means by some of these terms.
Okay, and this again is based on Act 680.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have the act included, and the language in the policy is verbatim from the act.
So you'll see, it, the, the policies look the same. The, the top copy just says new policy because it is new. The second one is what we passed. It looks exactly the same. Then the third piece that you'll have is the actual act itself, which has a lot of the same language and verbiage in it as well.
Okay. Give everybody a moment to look through. I'll make a motion that we adopt school board policy GAMK and send it to the full board with a recommendation. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Creason, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any further questions or comments from Mr. Morales? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes eleven zero.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number five point six is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy GBC.
GBC is dealing with the application process for vacant positions. It was, it's an updated part of the policy based on Act 423 of the 2017 legislative session. So again, sometimes, I'm not exactly sure how they get it, but they realize that, oh, you know what, you might want to change the language a little bit. So I know it looks a little dated, but what it basically says is Act 423 of the 2017 legislative session added student services to the list of persons providing services which require criminal history review. So basically, it just outlines who actually we have to make sure that we do a criminal background check in addition to all of our other employees.
Any questions for Mr. Morales?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a, a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Creason. Just take, board members are taking a moment to look through. I don't want to rush you all. Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Morales? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes eleven zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number five point seven is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy IDBA.
IDBA is dealing with our sexual education policy. It is an updated version based on Act 681. Act 681 prohibits teachers from instructing or discussing topics of sexual orientation or gender identity in grade six through 12. Again, if you want to see what the revision is, it is located in blue in the policy itself.
Okay, we'll give everybody a moment to look through that. And again, this is based on Act 681.
I just have a question.
Please.
Ms. Votch, so this particular file, IDBA, all our employees are being made aware of these, correct? So that they know what's allowed or not.
In July, in July, when we do our data fest, I do a section with all of our administrators on the legislative changes, and we gave them this particular act at that time and asked them to discuss it with their own faculties and such. So.
So they're being made of all the, all the new policies or additional?
They should be aware of it. They will, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Saisart. Any other questions from board members?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt policy IDBA and send it to the full board with a recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Creason. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Saisart. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes eleven zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number five point eight is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy IDDF.
IDDF is in relation to the education of students with, with exceptionalities. It is an updated policy based on Act 689. Act 689 requires school boards to adopt a policy that each school, under its jurisdiction, provide written information regarding legal procedures affecting the transfer of individual rights from parent to child when the child attains the age of majority. Also, at the child's first individualized education program, which is an IEP, meeting of the school year, the document shall be provided to a parent of each child who is either 14, 15, 16, or 17 years old, who participates in alternative assessment, and parents shall be provided a form by which to confirm receipt of this information. And I just want to make all of you aware, this is something we already do. We've been doing this for years. This is just something that was added to our policy, but we've been doing this for a long time. So I don't want you to think this is something we haven't been doing. It's something we've been doing. They just, you know, when they pass laws, they, they change our policy, but we've been doing this for a long time.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Morales. Any questions for Mr. Morales?
No, I don't have any question. I just make a motion.
Okay.
On five point eight, full board.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. White. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes eleven zero.
Okay, and our final policy for tonight is five point nine, the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy JGC.
JGC is Student Health Services, and if that looks familiar, this is actually the third time we've looked at this policy over the past sessions, but they just keep adding little things that they realize should probably go in this policy. So it is an updated policy based on Act 35, 375. Act 375 requires that school boards adopt a policy that each school nurse participate in an in-service training program of at least one hour related to sickle cell disease. Again, this is something that Ms. Laurie has already had in place since it was passed in June. However, they just got around to adding it to our policy.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions for Mr. Morales regarding JGC?
Covers the, the cost of this additional training.
We do.
That's my fault. That's it.
These are all these unfunded mandates that come from the legislature.
Any other questions for Mr. Morales? Not all entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Creason, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes eleven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Morales.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, Ms. Lamoyne. Good job. Next item are superintendent's notes. Ms. Votch.
Yeah, I, I did want to make a couple of comments about the special session that is going on right now. Before I do that, though, I just want to remind everyone that we have our annual day of reflection breakfast on Thursday, where we should have between 400 and 500 of our community members attending the breakfast Thursday morning at 8:30 at Schuman High School's ninth grade academy gymnasium. And then also at the high school on Monday, November 18th, is the CHS Expo, where parents of eighth grade students always come and take a look at what the offerings are, and they and their children are welcome, and then we, subsequent to that, meet with all the eighth graders, and we bring them on campus and such. But the expo is Monday night at Schuman High School.
And what time is that for?
You have some sessions that you can register.
Yeah, you register, you go online and register, and then the sections, sessions are broken up so that we have them in manageable groups.
Great.
Okay? All right, I, I wanted to just quickly, I, I know we all are aware that Governor Landry has convened a special session to do tax reform for the state of Louisiana. There are two issues, well, there are many issues that will affect us at some point, but two that are most glaring, and I just wanted to give you somewhat of an update on it. As most of you know, with our ad valorem taxes, there is something called an inventory tax, which affects heavily, you know, large businesses such as refineries. The river parishes in the state of Louisiana are really the most affected ones when it comes terms to money and how much money that is, is generated each year by this inventory tax. The way it works right now is local governmental bodies assess this inventory tax as part of the ad valorem, and what the major companies then have done is they could go to the state legislature and get most of that money back. And it's like a $286 million hit to the state budget because they reimburse these large companies for the inventory tax. So part of this tax reform that is being proposed to reduce the state budget is to eliminate the inventory tax. That was the initial presentation of it. The inventory tax to St. Bernard Parish is 17 and a half percent of your, of the total ad valorem tax. So for the entire parish of St. Bernard, that would mean almost a $14 million hit per year. What it meant to the school system is between 3.8 and 3.9 million dollars a year.
Wow.
So if that inventory tax went away, just think the budget we just adopted, like, look at it as $4 million less. Look at the cuts we would have to do and make, and a lot of that money is dedicated to employee pay, as well as our operational expenses, buying buses and those kinds of things. So that is a huge amount of money. So what the state did, or what they are doing now, is saying to parishes, okay, we really want to eliminate that, but right now, we're going to give you a local option to say you can go ahead and voluntarily stop assessing the inventory tax. And what we will do if you do that is that we will pay you upfront a lump sum of three years' worth of the inventory tax, up to a total of $15 million. Well, $15 million covers just about one year for St. Bernard Parish, so that's not even a real option. So our legislators and I've, you know, we've been working, and I have to say, Mike Bayham has been doing an excellent job in communicating and taking this fight, he really has, you know, on the House floor and communicating with us about this. And the representatives in the river parishes are heavily opposed to the elimination of this inventory tax. So what we are trying to make sure happens with it is that the piece of the allowability stays in the state constitution. In other words, that the state constitution would have verbiage in there that would say that the state cannot force a parish to eliminate the inventory tax, because they're giving us the local option right now to continue it. But if it's taken out of the constitution and put it just, and put it just in legislation, that you have the local option, well, then the next legislative session, they can remove it. So as of today, supposedly, it, the language is still in the state constitution that the state cannot force us to eliminate it. So we have to be very vigilant and make sure that that stays in there, because I don't think the parish would have much appetite, because if we wanted, and it's just not the school board, it's the sheriff's department, local government, and every taxing authority here. If we had $14 million less per year coming into St. Bernard Parish, then what are the agencies going to want to do? I mean, if you have to try to make that up, you're going to ask the people to do that, and in today's climate, I don't know how well that would work, but even if you had something like outs, we don't have any outstanding bonds right now, but other entities do, you would have to automatically adjust your millages to cover the principal and interest on any outstanding bonds, which is increasing the tax liability to homeowners and small businesses to relieve, you know, big business from this inventory tax. So we're, yeah, we're watching that very, very closely, that would have a significant, significant impact. Okay, the second issue that is being strongly considered, and you may have been hearing about it, is this teacher pay raise business. Okay, and I'm, do my little, try to do my little five-minute editorial comment on this. The teachers' retirement system, at its very inception back in 1936, the legislature went and established a retirement system and immediately put all of the teachers into this retirement system, as well as the parishes and such, and did not fund a long-term liability. So in other words, if they, if you were a teacher and you've been teaching 25 years, they put you into the system and gave you 25 years of credit. But just think, from a financial standpoint, for 25 years, you should have been paying into it, and your employer should have been paying into it, and investing that money for that long-term payout once you retire. Well, when the state legislature set that thing back, set it up. Well, when the state legislature set that thing back, set it up years ago, it started out with an unfunded accrued liability, because they didn't put the seed money in for all the people they put into it. They did the same thing when they took in the colleges and universities into the teachers' retirement system, because LSU and all the colleges and universities are in the same retirement system we have, into teachers' retirement. So when they took all those employees in, they did the same thing. The seed money for that long-term liability was not put in at the same time. So what has happened is that unfunded accrued liability, and they've passed legislation over the course of the years, people's pet legislation, you know, to allow these people to get in, or that person to get in, or whatever the case may be. The bottom line is, the teachers' retirement system, as all the public retirement systems, have an unfunded accrued liability. And right now, it's eight billion dollars is the unfunded accrued liability. There's something called the initial unfunded, and then the total unfunded. So the initial of the eight billion, about two billion dollars is that initial unfunded liability, that there's legislation, that it has to be retired by twenty thirty-nine, I think is the year. All right. That's why the employer contribution rate is so high in the teachers' retirement system, because every year, some, that money is going to, is being, going to pay down that unfunded accrued liability. So part of what they've done with this legislation is to say, okay, we're going to take out of the state constitution, there are three protected funds in the state constitution right now. In the Millennial Trust Fund, there's something called, we have the Education Excellence Fund. That K to twelve education gets a third of the interest of that every year. And statewide, that's been amounting to about between eleven and twelve million dollars a year that's spread among all the school districts. There's also two funds relating to that big tobacco settlement money years and years ago that's called an AG fund, two different AG funds. That for K to twelve education generates every year about twenty and a half million right now, K to twelve, and another twenty and a half million for higher ed. So what they're proposing to do is to say, all right, we're going to dissolve those funds. Those funds have principally, in the, in the funds themselves, is a total of about two billion dollars. So we're going to just dissolve those funds, take that two billion, and make a one-time lump sum payment against this unfunded accrued liability. So we're going to drop it down, or pay two billion dollars down, and go from eight down to six. So what is that going to do? That will then decrease the employer contribution rate. So we would pay, instead of, this year it's twenty-one point five percent. Next year, it's slated to be twenty point nine five percent. So they're saying if we take this two billion dollars down and pay down the unfunded accrued liability, the state then did seven different simulations of what that would look like to the employer contribution rate. The most, the one that they feel most comfortable with is something that would then drop the employer contribution rate from the projected twenty point nine five percent down to sixteen point sixteen percent, to drop it down about four point seven nine percent, so that we would pay less as an employer contribution rate. And what you do with that difference in the money would then be turned around and fund for the teachers and the employees that two thousand dollar, one thousand dollar raise permanently. So we would then take the money, instead of giving it to the teachers' retirement fund in the employer contribution rate, we turn around and fund our own pay raises, two thousand for teachers and one thousand for support employees. Now, what happens to the money we would lose on the interest rate? Well, that goes away. The Education Excellence Fund, we fund one locally here, we fund one of our four-year-old classes with that money. And with the AG, we fund another four-year-old class, because the four-year-old classes are not funded through the MFP. We get no MFP money for them, unless it's a special needs gift. So we would then have to find money, if we're going to continue those two sections of four-year-olds, we would have to go into our general fund and be able to fund that. When they ran these simulations, and y'all, if I'm getting too much in the weeds, stop me here, because, you know, this is stuff I do all the time, and, but what they did, it's like, okay, how are you figuring out how much money we're going to save? I said, let me see these simulations, you know, I was talking to Beth Sieno at the Department of Ed, who runs, who's running these simulations. Well, they're assuming, and it gets complex, because our payroll maybe runs around fifty-four million dollars a year. Or, I think it was fifty-nine this year. I don't know, it was in high, mid to high fifties. So what they have to do is assume, take your past stuff, and assume how much you're going to increase in your salaries, because that will be whatever rate you apply to that. And then they would see how much savings you would get. So all of these suppositions come in, are the premises, when you sit there and run these simulations. So our, the simulation they think was most, I guess, going to happen, I mean, and again, remember, these are simulations and estimates. They were looking at, we would come out with maybe about a two and a half million dollar savings, and they're saying it would only cost us close to one point nine million dollars to go ahead and give that particular pay raise, based upon the employees we had in October of twenty twenty-three. Okay? I mean, we've hired, just think how many more people we've hired over this past year. So they think that we would come out ahead about seven hundred, a little over seven hundred thousand a year. I don't think we'd come out ahead seven hundred thousand a year. Our earnings growth rate was about ten and a half percent, which was higher than most, meaning our payroll went up more than most, when you talk about an earnings growth rate. It went up about ten and a half percent. Well, they're doing the simulation, they're capping our growth at eight percent. Now, we went up a lot, because if you remember, not only did we give that state pay raise, but we went ahead and gave that additional, remember, two thousand and fifteen hundred dollars to the support people, and two thousand to the employees through the Esser monies that we shifted around. Well, I think that was, we're not going to have as high a growth rate this year, because there's not going to be that money to go ahead and give another, you know, another session of that. So the bottom line is, there are some districts in the state that even with the drop in the employer rate, will not be able to fund their own two thousand, one thousand dollar pay rate, pay raise. So they're, they're jockeying and seeing how the state can make up that particular difference. There was also an amendment put on there today, or tried, but the author of the amendment withdrew it because he didn't get enough support, to say if a district had more than enough savings for the two thousand, one thousand, that you would go ahead and give more. You would exhaust it. But part of my issue is, just think of the people that, we don't get the two thousand and one thousand dollar pay raises for, all of our four-year-old teachers and our four-year-old parishes. You know, we always have to come up with local monies to supplement that. And if people are paid on a teachers' pay scale, the state may only give us a thousand, but we honor the pay scale that they're on. So it's a lot of estimates out there, but it looks like as part of the package that this will pass. So we will look to see, if it passes, a permanent pay raise next year of the two thousand, one thousand. It's not going to mean any more for any of our teachers or employees, because they got it as a stipend this year. This will just put it into the salary schedule itself. So they'll continue to get those one-time stipends now in a permanent pay raise on the scale. The savings, you know, it should be funded by that differential that we just talked about. But we then will be looking to fund two additional, I mean, two of our four-year-old classes that will have to rearrange and find some monies, more local monies, to devote to that if we continue with our universal four-year-old program. Now, there's some discussion, of course, always, that, well, will the state put more money into early childhood? Will they make up this? I don't know, everybody up there is jockeying for all of their individual special interests. So everybody, when they reduce all these exemptions and get rid of them, everybody's going to say, well, what about that film tax credit? What about the historic tax credits? What about this, what about that? And a lot of those people are being told, well, wait till the, pass this now, and wait till the regular session that comes up in the spring, and then we'll see what we can, what we can do for you. So I guess it's who's going to be the loudest and most powerful lobby to see how all this is going to shake out in the end. Now, remember, any of these changes, these constitutional changes, has to be put, put before the people for a vote of the people. So they're looking at doing that in the March election. Whatever changes that goes through this special session, which affects the change in the state constitution, will have to be voted on by the people in March. So I just wanted to bring those two issues to your attention so that when you hear about it, you know, on the news, or as people are talking about it, those are the two that I'm looking at, that right now, it seems like will affect us the most, or could affect us the most.
So if they choose to do these things, they, they can't mandate that we use that money for teacher pay raises, correct?
Sure they can, if they put it in the legislation.
So I'm just, I mean, obviously, I'm all for the teachers' pay raises, I love the idea of it, but when I hear you say that we might use the inventory tax, so then you're adding a negative to a budget, and increase in requiring us mandate, it seems like odd that you'd be able to mandate which portion of the MFP are they going to, because we pay, right, we pay into TRSL, not just with state funds, but with local funds too, right? Like, a portion of our local funds are paying the benefit.
Absolutely.
How can you mandate that I have to use my local funds?
Ms. Harris. How many, how many unfunded mandates have we had over the, I mean, they do this all the time. There are unfunded mandates that have, in my whole fifty years of doing this, and at least thirty-five of them in the financial part of this, I've seen mandate after mandate after mandate with no funds coming in. Now, this thing with the inventory tax, I do think, you know, there are too many, too many parishes that are going to be affected. So that local option has to stay in there. Because what would this parish do? And it's not just the school system, I'm talking local government, I'm talking the sheriff's department, I'm talking every funding, everyone who levies any kind of a millage in this parish is going to be significantly affected by this, if that inventory tax would quote, go away. And to continue services, whether it's education services, law enforcement services, parish services, you'd have to go out to the people and say, will you pass more millage? Because the inventory tax is going away. I mean, I don't know, that's, that's a real tough thing to look at. So I don't, I'm hoping that they would have the, you know, sense enough not to do that, and to make that a local option. As of right now, it is a local option. As of right now, I'm being told that it is staying in the constitution, that local option, that the state cannot force us to eliminate it. But it could pass in the House, then it goes to the Senate, and then it goes to a conference committee, if it's not the same, and you know what happens in those cases, anything could happen. But I can't see, it would cause such turmoil in, in the state of Louisiana, in all of the river parishes, in any place that has a significant percentage of inventory tax. I just can't see that happening. And, you know, and I have to say, our representative is working very hard, and I've talked to him today, and he sent me the copy in the legislation that says it's staying in the constitution, that they cannot force us to do this. So we'll see how it all plays out. I just want everybody aware of it, so that when we're talking about it to local officials or to anyone that you have any discussions or influence with statewide, that these things, that we can speak about it as this progresses. And as far as teacher pay, and let me just say this, you know, we are now, in Louisiana, at least five thousand dollars below the southern regional average. This two thousand dollar pay raise statewide is still going to keep us at least three thousand below the southern regional average, not even national, but the southern regional average. And if something does not happen with our teachers to get us at least to what everyone else is doing, we're going to continue to lose more and more good people to other professions. They're not going to come into teaching, we're not going to get the best and the brightest. Because people, when they come into teaching, know that if they are part of the best and the brightest, they can earn more elsewhere. So the state and everyone has to make, at some point, a commitment to teachers. And you can say what you want about training, you can say what you want about leadership opportunities, and pipelines and all this stuff, but the bottom line, you talk to any teacher out there, you know, the bottom line is, they have to support their families as well. And that pay is extremely important, so, anyway.
Anyone else? Or any questions, Mr. Warner?
I just, just want to switch gears. Congratulate Schumont High football team for winning the district this year. First year moving into North Shore District, and then winning the district. Congratulations to Coach Tucker, all of his assistant coaches, all the players, and the parents, and all the volunteers, and everybody, and the band, and the cheerleaders, and the Chalmers, and everybody for being out there and cheering them on. They play in Terrabone, play Homer, in Homer, they play Terrabone High this weekend, we wish them luck. Go Owls!
Okay, all right. Go Owls.
And the volleyball team was in the playoffs too?
Oh, the volleyball team wasn't, they were in the playoffs, that's right. Okay, any, any more news or any comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. The meeting's now adjourned, thank you, and good night.